Odessa City Council being November 12th, year of our Lord 2024, 5:01 PM. Before we move on to item one, I'd like to ask the council for consideration of suspending the rules. Do I have a motion?
Sound move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of suspending the rules indicated by a vote of aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Anyone opposed, same sign. Motion is passing unanimously. We're going to move on to item two. Roll call. City Secretary?
Mayor Hovind?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Swanner?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Mata?
Present.
Councilmember Thompson?
Present.
Councilmember Vel Vasquez? Absent. Councilmember Cornell?
Present.
Councilmember Haney?
Present.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. Item three invocation will be given by Pastor Nicholas Caraway of Belmont Baptist Church, and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge since Councilman Vasquez is absent. Have a volunteer?
I'll do it.
Thank you. It will be given by Councilmember Mata. Pastor Nicholas Caraway? Floor is yours. This is your church.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone wishing to join us for a moment of prayer can do so voluntarily by standing up or sitting down. Pastor?
Pray with me, please. Father, I thank you so much for today. Lord, I thank you for this meeting, and Lord, I thank you for every person who's in this room. And Lord, I pray for your blessing upon all of them. I pray for your blessing upon their labors for this city, and Lord, I pray for your hand of blessing upon their families. Lord, I want to pray for Odessa. Lord, I pray for healing and unity in this city after the election. Lord, I pray for economic growth for this city going forward. But Lord, I pray more for a growth in righteousness than a growth in economics.
among all the distinguished departments and employees of the city of Odessa.
Lord, I pray for peace and safety in our schools and on our streets.
And in the course of the years that we've been here, in four years, and I've been on
I pray for our first responders, Lord, that you would bless them. We're so grateful for them, and we pray that you would equip them and keep them safe.
council quite a few long time, going back to 1995, we've worked with a lot of planners,
Lord, I pray for wisdom for our mayor and for our city council. Lord, I pray that you would show them the way and give them the courage to walk in it.
and I'm telling you, I think this is an honor that's well deserved.
And Lord, more than anything, I pray that Odessa would be a city where the name of Christ
I don't know how we're going to do this because we've never done this before, but we could
is honored. Hence, in his name we pray. Amen.
Do you want me in the pledges? be honoring the planning and zoning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic
The staff has been incredible. The thing is, I have no clue about what this award really means.
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You know, it's like when you watch a commercial and somebody got a J.D. Power Award or something like that, you're like, okay, that's great.
all.
You don't know what it is. Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag.
But they sure spent a lot of millions of dollars in marketing, making sure you buy
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
that car that had that J.D. Power. And then you realize it's not just for cars, it's for everything else. I hope this is not what this is, right? It's not a J.D. Power? Okay. So what I want to be able to do is invite the staff to come up and then introduce yourselves and then tell us what that award is, and then we'll proceed with the ceremony. Okay? We're going to do it a little different tonight. Introduce yourself to Odessa.
Okay. So I am Elizabeth Shaughnessy, and I'm the Director of Development. So with the planning department, we oversee different kinds of ordinances throughout the whole city. So we're looking at current planning and as well as strategic planning. So this actually is in collaboration with a lot of departments such as Parks and Rec, engineering, utilities. So it's a culmination and a representation of our city of how we're being prepared for the future. Our goal is to be ready for the next 20 years and at the same time, making sure that our current ordinance are keeping and staying up to date. And I'll let my colleagues say a little bit more and introduce themselves.
Jeff Fisher, Strategic Policy Manager. So this is really a culmination of all of the work that everybody's been planning, may have spearheaded it, but like they were saying, transportation, engineering, all of the city departments, and to our mayor and council and some past councils too for supporting it because if it wasn't for them and for the public, that all of you that come to those meetings over and over to share your input, we wouldn't have won this award. I will say this as well, we were the only city in West Texas that wasn't along the I-35 Belt that won this, so I think it's something to be proud of and thank you for your support as well.
Howdy. I'm James Reber. I'm a Senior Planner with the city of Odessa, and I help plan Odessa. Thank you.
Eric Reyes, and I'm a new member of this planning department, and it's a great privilege to help this planning department achieve their goals.
Hi. My name is Shayna Torres, and I'm a planning technician, hopefully future planner. I kind of just help with wherever I'm needed and getting new things done within the city.
Well, in the last four years, you've been here how long now? That's the most he's spoken, the whole time. And that's as much as you're going to get out of him. And with that, the city of Odessa proclamation. The Richard R. Lilly Award for Planning Excellence in the State of Texas. Whereas the Texas Chapter of American Plan Association recognizes the planning excellence in municipalities throughout the state, and whereas the Richard R. Lilly, the FICP Planning Excellence Recognition Program, awards municipalities in our state for increasing community awareness of the importance of urban planning, recognizing planning departments which meet certain professional requirements, aid in economic development and community image, and whereas the city of Odessa was presented with the Richard R. Lilly Award for Planning Excellence at the Texas Chapter of the APA Conference held in Allen, Texas on October 16th through the 18th, 2024, the only city in West Texas received this award. Now, therefore, I have yet, Hovind, by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the most wonderful city in West Texas, Odessa, do hereby recognize the city of Odessa as the winner of the 2024 Richard R. Lilly Award for Planning Excellence. So throughout the city of Odessa, I urge all citizens to recognize the development, the service department, and its staff for their hard work, dedication to improving the quality of life for us all Odessa. Let's give them a round of applause. We're also going to present them with this beautiful award, recognizing the commitment for professional planning of city administration, elected appointed officials, and exemplary professional standards demonstrated by the planning staff of the city of Odessa. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks to our boss for all the hard work that she's done.
Counsel, I would go ahead and go on to consent agenda. Counsel, will you review the consent agenda? Entertain a motion to accept, amend, or deny the consent agenda as presented?
So moved to approve the consent agenda, one through seven.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. I'm going to ask this council right now, do you want to move on to item 19? Or do you want to wait? If not, I'll proceed with regular agenda.
Proceed with regular agenda.
Proceed with the regular agenda. We're going to move on to item eight, consider purchase of mini excavator of water distribution wastewater collection. Alex?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Utilities Department would like council's consideration for approval for the purchase of a mini excavator for our water distribution and wastewater collections division. This equipment would help us respond faster to line breaks and customer service calls, accessibility in smaller areas such as alleyways, and reduce damage to some of those areas when we're in alleyways or anything like that. We have received three quotes for this item, with Kubota being the lowest at $66,435.49. The funds for this purchase are within the Utility Department's budget.
Counsel, any discussion?
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yes, sir.
I think it's an excellent idea to have something that's more mobile.
For sure.
So it's good thinking on that. But how many excavators actually do we have? Like three?
We currently have zero mini excavators in the Utilities Department. We currently have three backhoes that we use.
The large ones.
Yes, we don't have any backhoes. We have three backhoes, but no excavators.
Excellent.
So the issue is that we have to drive that down the road with a spotter. This mini excavator will allow us to put it on a trailer to be able to respond quicker to these line breaks, anything, any issues, customer service lines, taps, sewer calls, anything like that that we'll be able to dig up. The footprint on it is a lot smaller, too. We're able to maneuver in the alleyways. We're not able to do that with a backhoe, turn left and right, so this is going to be very helpful and accessible to alleyways and certain areas like that.
Excellent. With these minis like this, you can put them on a trailer, but you're not going to have to have a CDL.
No CDL.
To pull down there, your response time, you're driving 40 miles an hour.
It's 22 miles an hour as fast as you can go on a backhoe.
Down the street instead of 20 miles an hour. And that's on a good day.
Yes, sir.
And with what Alex and them have been doing, this is a great addition. How many line breaks did they service over the weekend? Nobody knows because they're getting on top of them, getting them isolated, and getting them changed, getting them fixed in that kind of time now. So it's great. They've come a long ways. It was three. Good job.
The team did a fantastic job at isolating where we weren't able to affect any residents. So we did it in such a timely manner that nobody was affected, and the water loss was minimal compared to other ones.
With the SOPs that you put in place, and now this mini excavator, and then the actual being able to exercise the valves as that continues has always been the issue.
Yes, sir.
2,200 valves that have been hit so far with 30 some odd that have been found to be closed, so that should help our pressure problems. Especially when we have the fire.
Yes, sir.
Good job.
Good job.
Yes, sir. Thank you guys.
Any questions? Comments? So on item eight, consider a motion to purchase a mini excavator for water distribution wastewater collection.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swanner, second by Councilmember Haney. All those in favor indicate by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We're going to move on to item nine, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase order for the SHI government. Nope, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry. For the purchase order of SHI Government Solutions Incorporated Microsoft License Enterprise Agreement for Software Licensing utilized by civil Odessa. Corey?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is Corey Swager with our IT Department. Our current Microsoft license agreement expires at the end of the month, and we are seeking approval to renew our three-year agreement. We are currently seeking to increase a little bit. We're looking to jump from 408,000 to 454,000 on this new agreement to add 30 licenses for our power apps that we're developing and for our power BI to allow a better transparency on all the different departments and what IT devices they have. We're looking to see if we can get this one to go into effect come December 1st, but we already have an agreement, it's already got legal and everything should be good to go.
Okay. Counsel, any questions?
The four Corey's one time?
It's a three-year agreement, so that's per year for a total of 1.364 million.
Okay. Per year.
And it is a budgeted item.
Counsel, any further discussion? Now entertain a motion for item nine.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cornell. Second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thompson. All those in favor indicate by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Corey. Resolutions, item 10, consider emergency purchase to scope, clean, repair, and/or replace the stormwater system. Ms. Fuentes?
Sorry, I'll be presenting for Ms. Fuentes.
Okay.
So this request is for an emergency purchase request to repair stormwater drainage pipe approximately 190 linear feet in length. I can probably go to the image so you guys can see. Located in the north of 1725 East Second Street, running south on Second Street. The pipe has developed a hole near to the inlet and causing erosion and hazardous void in the ground. This damage disturbs the flow and the rainwater and creates a public safety risk, and as the area could become a sunken hazard on the pavement. So unfortunately, the plating and the construction were happening at the same time, so there's an easement that's running across the property, and it's hitting the edge of the building. So we just don't want to see any more damage happen to it, so therefore, we're trying to get this addressed prior to. So we did want to make a floor amendment adjustment in where we originally had asked for 222,380, but because we need to get a bond for it, it went up a little bit, so it's going to be 225,356.
Put in place 1957?
Yes.
57, is that right?
For when it was built? Yeah, it was in the 50s.
In the discussion?
How long is it going to take to get fixed?
I'm not 100% sure, but I think we only asked for three months for the contract to be.
Okay. All right. There was just a clause in the agenda information that said repair or replace at the same cost?
Right, so when we did the scope, the original scope, it looked like there was a lot of debris that was in there. We actually had to stop just because we couldn't get through the whole thing, so therefore, we're going to flush it all out and see what's happening. But like I mentioned, we have the edge of the foundation that is right on the center of the easement, and so I'm afraid that that might be creating some stress on that drainage line. And it's been there for quite a bit, so that was part of our scope for this year to start scoping all of them in order to see what conditions they're in.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further discussion? If not, entertain a motion for item 10.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve by Councilmember Thompson. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Mata. All those in favor indicate by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. We're going to move on to item 11, consider the On Call Electrical HVAC Plumbing General Contract and Landscaping Services. Ms. Enriquez?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Mayor. Yes, on October the 9th, we issued a request for proposal for electricians, HVAC, and general contractor and landscaping services, and we received seven businesses that put a bid. And of course, these would only be for over, under, I'm sorry, under 50 grand. Anything over 50, of course, we'd do the bid process all over again, but we're very lucky that we got this many contractors because we tried it in July, and as y'all remember, we didn't have any. So this is a good thing.
Counsel, any discussion? Comments?
So these are just routine calls that just?
Yes, yes, sir.
Go out, fix it, and come back?
Yes.
All right. No discussion? Entertain a motion to approve item 11 as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swanner, second by Councilmember Mata. All those in favor indicate by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. We're going to move on to item 11, consider the Ector County Appraisal District Board of Directors for 2025 term. City Secretary?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is for the council to decide on who they would like to vote to be on the Ector County Appraisal District Board of Directors. This is a new way of, by legislation, that the new is to vote for the directors by the governing body. This list that's being handed out to you are the nominees that are listed alphabetically so the council can decide who they wish to appoint to be on the board. The representatives will be representing all taxing entities. The way this works was a formula, there's a formula that was calculated. The city of Odessa has a total of 670 votes, so this number can be divided by as many candidates as the council wishes to nominate to be on the board. So if you want, if council decides to do all five, we'll divide the number by five to equal to 670, or if they want to do one candidate, all that candidate will get the full, total votes of 670, or two, three, or four, however the governor, y'all wish to decide on that.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Who put these nominees on the list?
This was given by the Ector County Appraisal District.
Majority of these candidates were already on the board. They represented the ECISD. So how did, what was their process?
The process?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Because the appointee on the appraisal board by the city is not even on here. So I'm just curious, because I saw this and an email was sent out, but there was no process explaining how these nominees became nominees.
That is correct. I don't know how the process was. I do know that an application was given to the Ector County Appraisal District, but I don't know what the actual application.
Who did the application come from?
The applications?
It was given to the appraisal district?
Yes.
Or the appraisal district generated it?
That I do not know. I do not know.
So we don't know where the application came from, if it came from the state, because this is something that's not new, something that was never followed all across the state. So we don't know where the application process came from, how these nominees were, became nominees. Even in our elections, we can do a write-in. Can we do that?
I do not know.
I know where I'm going because there's a lot of unknowns here.
Who was the city representative that's on?
He's a realtor. He owns realtor right here on Eighth Street. I know him. We put him on two, three years ago. He owns property over there on East University, Ford Walk. He owns all the stuff.
Jeff Embra?
What's that?
Is it Jeff Embra?
Embra. Jeff Embra.
So we can vote for all five or just one, or just however many we want to?
Yes, two, three, or four.
But we don't know whether we can do a write-in? Whether we can or we can't?
I do not, we do not know if we can do a write-in.
Do we know what the deadline is?
Yes.
I read it at one point, and I don't remember.
It must be by December 31st.
So it can be tabled and brought up. It used to be every year that he had one representative on it. Yeah, I know. I mean, it completely changed without. Anybody told us? No, I mean, we just got sent this, but nobody explained anything to us. The representative we've had on, let's say, for example, one of the council members were on there. All of a sudden, you're not on there anymore without any explanation. You know, and the question is, can we add an applicant and we can vote for that?
Can this be opened up to more of the public, too?
Somebody here maybe want to be on there. You know, who would want to be on the appraisal district? That way, you know how your taxes are appraised. That's one of the biggest. Two, here's another question, is that how is it based that, obviously ISD is bigger, but they get 2555, county gets 1,005, we get 675. So how did that come about? What's that process? How did they determine that? Don't know. A lot of it unknown, but I mean, the thing is, is you get to December.
Can we just postpone it?
I just say postpone it. Well, postpone it, that way you don't have to table, I have to bring, you know, you can just postpone it and then get those questions and just put it back on the agenda. Let's postpone. Let's just do that. All right. We'll give the new council. Just so we get all the questions. What all do you need to know? You want to know where it came from? How it was generated? Is it open to the public? Is it open to the public? Can you still be nominated? Can you get a write-in? Can you write in? Anything else? Oh, the tally of the, how do you determine the votes by the district? And that gives the new council an opportunity to look at it. Because we're going to go ahead and postpone item 12 and move on to item 13, consider extending the effective date. No, I don't postpone.
I think we should do it.
Want to go ahead and do it? Okay, so we have a, I'm going to just do a motion. Okay, I need a motion to postpone item 12. Consider the County Appraisal District Board of Directors 2025 term. I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cornell. All those in favor indicate by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. We're going to move on to item 13, consider extending the effective date of Atmos West Texas proposed rate to increase to give the city time to review the rate filing package. City Manager?
So what this? What this is, you know, probably have done it before, and council will probably do it again in a year. Atmos comes out and they say, we want to raise our rate. We have lawyers, Thomas Baraco, Baracho, I always mess his name up, that represent the coalitions, they represent us in TCAP, they represent us at ERCOT with Atmos. They come in, then they file, and they say, we need to extend this, we want to study this, and we usually still get a rate increase, however, it's usually much lower than what
It must be by December 31st.
So it can be tabled and brought up.
It used to be, it ended, he had one representative on it.
Yeah, but...
Yeah, I know.
But, I mean, it completely changed without...
Anybody told us, yeah.
No, I mean, we just got sent this, but nobody explained anything to us. The representative we've had on, let's say, for example, one of the council members were on there. All of a sudden, you're not on there anymore without any explanation. You know, and the question is, can we add one, an applicant, and we can vote for that?
Can this be opened up to the, more the public, too?
Somebody here maybe want, might be on there. You know, who would want to be on the appraisal district? That way, you know how your taxes are appraised. That's one of the biggest. Two, here's another question, is that how, how's it based that, obviously ISD is bigger, but they get 25, 55, county gets 1,005, we get 675. So how did that come about? What's that process? How did they determine that? Don't know. A lot of them don't. But, I mean, the thing is, is you get to December.
We just need to table it.
Can we just postpone it?
I just say postpone it. Well, postpone it, that way you don't have to table, I have to bring, you know, you can just postpone it, and then get those questions, and just put it back on the agenda.
Okay.
Let's postpone. Let's just do that.
Just so we get...
We give the new council...
Just so we get all the questions.
Yeah.
What all do you need to, you know, you want to know where it came from?
Yeah.
How it was generated?
Is it open to the public?
Is it open to the public?
Can you add?
Can you still be nominated?
Can you?
Can you write in?
Can you write in?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Oh, the tally of the, how do you determine the votes by the district? Give the new council an opportunity to make, to look at it. Because we're gonna go ahead and postpone item 12, and move on to item 13. Consider extending the effective date...
We have a vote on that?
Uh, no, I don't postpone.
I think, I think we should do it.
Want to go ahead and do it? Okay, so we have a, I'm gonna go ahead and just do a motion. Okay, I need a motion to postpone item 12.
Sound made.
Consider the Ector Appraisal District Board of Directors 2025 term. I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cornell. All those in favor indicate by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. We're gonna move on to item 13. Consider extending the effective date of Atmost West Texas proposed rate to increase, to give the city time to review the rate filing package. City manager?
So what this...
What this is, and you'll probably have done it before, and council will probably do it again in a year. Atmos comes out, and they say, we want to raise our rate. We have lawyers, Thomas Baraco, Baracho, I always mess his name up, that, that represent the coalitions, they represent us in TCAP, they represent us at ERCOT with Atmos. They come in, then they file, and they say, we need to extend this, we want to study this. And we usually still get a rate increase, however, it's usually much lower than what it would be if you just took what they have. But they need action by each entity to say, yes, we want this. Or, everybody just gets stuck with the rate increase. Over.
Counsel, any discussion?
This happens also with Encore. We always get a decrease on the increase. And then they tell us, hey, we got you a deal.
Yeah, not much different than diesel process.
Counsel, any discussion on this? Intertain a motion?
I just, I just think it's worth waiting, because we have had a change in the presidency, where there's gonna be more focus on the premium basing and helping us do our production. So I think that these rates, the costs will go down, so we need to...
So do we need action to consider the, extending the effective, effective date, right? The original, December 19th, to add additional 90 days?
Nine days.
Okay.
Just need an informal motion.
Okay.
Sound moved.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Matha. I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by, second by Councilmember Thompson, that to extend the effective date of Atmost West Texas proposed rate, which increased to give the city time to review the rate filing package. This is, suspend the original December 1924 effective date of the company's rate change, for a maximum period of 90 days, to allow city time to review the rate changes. All those in favor indicate by a vote of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. We're gonna move on to item 14. Consider reallocation appropriation of remaining ARPA funds, and reallocate, remember, ARPA funds for the ARPA projects. Ms. Bendt?
Good evening, mayor and counsel.
Good evening.
Thank you. So back in January, you all allocated the remainder of the ARPA funds that needed to be allocated. It was $8 million and some change, and went to various projects, as you all know, a few projects for the police department, some equipment for the fire department, some road projects. And so, we have to have all of these funds committed by December 31st of 2025. And so, we've been keeping in touch with our departments and their projects to make sure that they were gonna have contracts in place for the full amount that they were allocated monies for. So in that, we discovered that the police department projects, a couple of them had about $220,000 that were allocated to them, but the contracts that they got for those projects were under. And so, we have a couple other ARPA projects that have come in above what was allocated to them through the process. And so, we're reallocating some of those monies to those projects, just to make sure we have everything committed by December 31st of this year. And then, of course, we have to have everything spent by December 31st of 2026. And so, this will help us ensure we, we meet that mark. The only other project that won't be, or that is not on this list, but still very much involved is the incremental pay that we did to the first responders. That was one of the first things we did with the ARPA money. That's set to take us through all four quarters of 2025, and potentially the first quarter of 2026. So, we'll have everything expended by the date we need to, so long as we can get this money reallocated, appropriated.
Counsel, discussion?
Nope.
We need, any action? What do we need?
Approve.
So we're gonna do your reallocation?
Yeah, allocate it.
Counsel?
Move reallocating the ARPA funds?
We have a question.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Second by Councilmember Cornell. All those in favor by indication of a vote of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Gonna move on to item 15. Consider amending chapter 6 of the City of Odessa Personnel Policy and Procedures. This is first approval. Policy prohibiting the use of TikTok on city-owned and/or issued devices. City manager?
Okay. And it's a little bit easier this time, because our comms director is out of town, and she was the one that really liked TikTok. But, last session, it came down that no government subdivisions of the state government would have TikTok installed on their devices, and we've developed the policy, and this is just approving that policy.
Counsel, any discussion on the policy on TikTok? If not, entertain a motion and a second. I have a motion by Councilmember Haney. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Matha. All those in favor indicate by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. You are saving the world.
Yes.
Item 16, discussing, discuss and consider amending section 8-1-6, entry in the restroom of the opposite sex of the city code of ordinances. This is second and final approval, amending the current restroom use regulation in public buildings. Ms. Trebigna?
Again, this is the second reading, final approval of this. We went through it in pretty, pretty detail during the first reading. I put it up for y'all's approval.
Mayor, there's, there's been a little bit of confusion. And so, what I want to do is just review to make sure that this is the language that y'all want in there. And it's H, private right of action. And as it stands right now, it's any person other than the state, its political subdivisions, or any officer or employee of a state or local government entity in this state has standing to bring, and may bring, a civil action against any person who knowingly or intentionally enters or uses a restroom in a public or private building in the city of Odessa designated for the exclusive use by persons that do not correspond to his or her biological sex, except in the circumstances described in subsection E, or who intends to engage in such conduct. Is that the, the correct language that y'all wanted? That's what we have right now.
So what's the confusion?
Well, the confusion is, is that during all of the, during all of the back and forth, we, we're thinking we may have had a clerical error.
Which back and forth?
Well, with, when we were here three weeks ago. Because originally, it, it was basically any person, political subdivisions, and then civil action against any person who, uh, let's see, videos are intends to, let's see, violates or intends to violate the provision at this ordinance. So we removed that, and we put in the private right of action.
Who, who brought up the confusion?
Well...
Or, or, let me, let me back up. You say you, you feel that you may have a clerical error. Who made the clerical error, and how did you determine it was a...
Well...
And how do you determine this is not what the council intended?
Well, I just wanted to be clear that this is what the council wanted.
I understand, and I'm trying to be clear of what you're stating, because I'm using your words.
Right.
We believe that we have a clerical error. Who determined it was the, let me finish? Who determined who made the clerical error? When did that come to light? From three weeks ago, because nothing was said that day.
Right.
We were here a while, let me finish. We were here for quite some time. So, city attorney, walk me through what your, what statement you're making right now, because...
Yeah.
You have a tendency to sit in that chair, and then get off that dais, and get in your office, and then change your mind several times. So please, be clear of what you're asking, and so we can answer.
We think there may be some confusion. We, my office and I, we think there may have been some confusion, that we may not have gotten the correct language down.
How'd you come to that definition?
Well, we're thinking that maybe it was supposed to be who violates or intends to violate the provision of this ordinance, rather than what we had here. That's on there.
So you're thinking, base that up with fact. Give me some facts, give me some, back it up. Don't want to hear thinking, don't want to hear, and we need an opinion here. So, what, what did you get from the discussion? Because the discussion was with the public. The public had discussion, okay?
Right.
We read this.
Right.
Everybody did read it, correct?
Right.
Everybody read it. You did read, y'all did read it, because we have a tendency to say, oh, I didn't read it.
Right.
And this council approved it. So I'm asking the council, determine on what the city, city attorney has stated. Was there confusion? And state, state what you think you're confused on, once again, because you're specific on it. What is it again?
Well, the confusion is, we were thinking, and of course, we may be completely wrong here, but we adopted the private right of action, as I just read it, in a public or private building. But, we were thinking that maybe it was who violates or intends to violate the provision of this ordinance. And then, so knowingly or, who knowingly or intentionally enters or uses a restroom in a public or private building in the city of Odessa designated for the exclusive use of persons that do not correspond to his or her biological sex, except in the circumstances described in subsection E, who intends to engage in such conduct. We were thinking that that was, that we did not get that correct, and it was the first little part. And we just wanted to clarify and make sure that we had it right, today. Before you voted on it again.
May I bring up a technical witness, if you will?
Yes. You're gonna need that.
John?
This is where we get into the legal back and forth. Just state your name for the, for the record, please.
Sure. Jonathan Kevi, I'm the policy director for Texas Values.
Thank you, sir.
Texas, I'm sorry. Sorry, Texas Values.
Texas Value, okay. Go ahead.
I mean, I'm still trying to understand what the, what the confusion is.
I am too.
We are. My understanding was that the council adopted a private cause of action last, last meeting.
You did, okay.
That, that language seems to be consistent with what you did.
Okay.
From what, from what we could tell.
This, this, we've been, this is why I'm asking the question.
Sure.
What's the confusion? When did the confusion? Who brought up the confusion? And what's, and so, please state, state your opinion on the confusion. I haven't gotten that yet. And that's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to assess. What's the, you haven't answered any of this?
No, but we're just trying to make sure that we're on the right page, that what was passed is what y'all want passed.
Well, we want to pass it, but that's not what we want. And that, I mean, it, I mean, what was the vote? What was the vote?
It was...
Three weeks ago?
Five, two. Five, two, with Councilmember Thompson and Vasquez.
Mayor, allow Tina to come up and explain.
I'm sorry?
You want to allow Tina to come up and explain? She wants to speak on this.
Yeah, come on.
The only, the confusion that is what was in the packet, there was an ordinance presented right before the meeting, and there was a difference in the language. So, when it was passed, and, and I'm the one that accepts all the changes, I just want to make sure that, did you approve what was in the packet, or did you approve what was presented to the council right before the meeting happened? That's the only confusion.
That's, thank you, thank you for being here.
That might have passed out another piece of paper.
Yes.
As we sat down.
So I just need to know what, what language.
That's, that's what I was seeking. Yeah, that's exactly. And, because I, thank you, Tina, because I asked that specific question. So what we had in the package, there was one in the package that, that had been reviewed in work session. And then, there was a pass out. I, I, I don't need help, I can explain it. And so, I asked specifically a question, was, what was the, the addition? And it was the pass out. Because I said, okay, because, when I was reading here, we saw two differences. I said, so what was the, the latest, what we were being presented? And then that was the hand pass out. So, and I only speaking for myself, I did not read the package, and I read the handout. So, as for me, I was working off the handout and the language that was in the handout. I could say that for myself. I know what I was voting for, and I know what I read. And so, but, you know, you counsel, if y'all want to address individually, if y'all want to address that.
What, what Dan read, that got passed, is the correct version?
Yes, the correct version. And that was the handout? Yep.
That was the handout that we got.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's what we discussed that night. Nobody was discussing the package.
I have 73 versions.
Yes. Yes. Okay. So, that it?
That's it, that's it.
So you have...
I have cards, sticky cards.
Your show, city secretary. Sorry about that, it just gets technical sometimes.
Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. As your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. Gail Norris?
Good evening, once again, to both this council and to my fellow Odessans. My name is Gail Norris, and once again, I'm here to discuss ordinance 816, or as it has become known, the Odessa bathroom ban. In October, 816 was altered in a few ways, in what members of this council characterized as an effort to protect children from transgender people. There was no evidence provided that transgender people are more dangerous than any other group. There were no crime statistics mentioned at all, only vague mention of incidents happening, quote, "two or three times," with no mention of where and when. I, however, do have some statistics for you. According to a report in 2022 by the U.S. Department of Justice, from the years 2017 to 2020, trans people were victims of violent crime at a rate of two and a half times the rate of violent crimes against cisgender individuals. A study from the UCLA School of Law set the ratio even higher, at four times more likely. Do you know how many incidents there have been in Texas of a person claiming to be one gender or another, just to sneak into a bathroom and harass someone? Zero. There exists no reputable crime data that trans people, in any significant capacity, use their gender identity as a means to commit crimes against others, nor any indication that trans people are more likely to commit crimes as a whole. This holds true for adults and for kids. Instead of statistics, Jonathan Sines of Texas Values, who could not be with us tonight, brought a vision of paranoia. When presented with a lack of reported crimes by trans people, he responded to this council, "Why wait for something to happen?" He told you this idea based on conjecture, an assumption that your invisible enemy could strike at any time. This is a sort of legislative snake oil, that does nothing to prevent what it advertises, because what it seeks to prevent simply does not exist. Sines knows he has no defense, other than trend following. He told this council that it would be among good company, following other conservative cities he has spoken to across the nation. Frankly, I believe the people of Odessa deserve better than to be governed by means of peer pressure. I believe that this council has made a mistake. This ordinance solves nothing, prevents nothing, and protects no one. If the election results last week are anything to go by, policies like these do not serve the interests of the majority of Odessans, as Mayor Hoven would believe. But you can fix this. Those of you for whom this is your last meeting with this council can end on a high note, by actually preserving the freedoms of Odessans, instead of restricting them. Do not approve this amendment. I ask, as a public servant, as a trans person, and as a fellow citizen, that you make the right choice, and vote no on 816. Thank you.
Thank you.
Landry Pugh?
Good afternoon. This is not meant to be an attack on any person, or any group of people. I'm a father of a daughter. I'm a soccer coach to young girls. I'm an uncle to young ladies. And I have three minutes to speak, as you mentioned a minute ago. That's considerably more time than it takes to sexually assault a minor, and cause irreparable damage to their lives and to their family's lives. My role as a father is to provide and to protect for mine. And one of the essential roles of city government is to protect the weakest from those that might prey on their weakness. According to a website, I pulled up, homefacts.com, it's a sex offender database, shows that registered in Odessa, we have 494 in Ector County, and that there are 569 registered sex offenders in Midland County. That is four times the national, excuse me, the national average for sex offenders, registered sex offenders in your county. I was speaking to a family and child protective services employee this week, and they said that that number is way low. Said that website is way outdated, and doesn't accurately reflect the amount of sex offenders that are in this county. They're saying there's a lot more, just due to our economic boom, and the transit workforce that comes and goes, that we are higher risk, that the kids in this town are higher risk. And it was already mentioned, the voters of Ector County just voted in a, a new city council, new mayor. And one of the things that they ran on was fully funding the police, and fully staffing the police. Safety, and in my town, is a big thing. Safety for my kids is a big thing. And I think that the voters spoke. They want to feel safe. We want to feel safe when our kids are out doing things, that we're not worried about it. And I think this is how we help protect our kids, making sure that, that we help ensure the safety of the most vulnerable in our town. Please help ensure that predators are not able to take advantage of the terminology of what defines a woman to prey on the young in the place that is least monitored, a women's restroom. And so, I've come today to ask you to please perform this fundamental role of government, and protect the weakest in our society, our young ladies. Thank you for your time.
Matilda Van Morales?
Evening, City Council, fellow Odessans. My name is Matilda Man Morales, I'm the president of Outmost Texas, which is a community organization that seeks to build community and support transgender individuals by breaking down legal and social barriers. I'm a transgender woman. This election cycle broke the record for the most anti-transgender political advertisements, and Odessa saw its fair share of homophobic ads. This item sixteen is just a new amendment to rally hatred and votes behind, to rally hatred, because of course, hatred together binds many, divide and conquer. There has never, to my knowledge, been an instance where a transgender person harmed someone in the bathroom in the city of Odessa. The trans community is not a threat to Odessa or anyone in the bathroom, we're just trying to live out our lives. And if that means going to the bathroom, then so be it. What's next? Separate water, separate water fountains? Some folks are old, some folks in this building are old enough to know about that. My point is that I don't want the government in the bathroom, and I don't want a witch hunt to harm people who aren't even trans, feminine men, masculine women, sometimes you can't really tell from like the side or whatever. I'm so happy that this election was a landslide, and that the, the city can focus on real issues like infrastructure and the well-being of Odessans. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Tracy Austin.
Good evening, my name is Tracy Austin. I spoke with you when this came up the first time, and told you about an experience that I had when I had to use the restroom for men. No one seems to worry about that. Are you worried about me going into your restroom? No? I'm not a threat? Neither are the people here. The people here are citizens of the city, and they just want to be left alone. They just want you to see them as people, as children of God, because that's what they are, and you're treating them as if they are criminals. Last time, you said, Mayor, that Harris might be elected, and she might come to Odessa to restrict our rights here. Now that has not played out. Now there's no threat. Harris isn't coming to Odessa. So why are we still pursuing this? And in reference to sex offenders, how many of those are trans people? Probably zero. If you look at statistics, people in the LGBT community are not people who abuse children or anyone else. You are exposing us, the taxpayers, to potentially thousands or millions of dollars in lawsuits by performing this heinous and hateful act. I ask that you reconsider, that you do what God requires of us, to do mercy, I mean, do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly with our God. And if you're bored, go after the massage parlors. They are popping up everywhere, but we're not doing anything about that, and they actually are hurting people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Pauline Williamson, this is a little short for me. I wasn't at the city council meeting last week, or three weeks ago, was it, when this was first discussed, but I did watch some of the video, and I saw one of the guys that kind of echoed what this young man said earlier, where the father was concerned that his daughter would be watched by a man when she went to a restroom, and talking about how weird that would be, and I kind of feel that. I have to assume that that man's biggest concern, just like the man that we just heard, was the safety of his daughter, and I completely identified that with that. I'm a teacher, my student's safety is my number one concern. If they were attacked, I would fight back and be willing to lose my life for them, because they are critical. In fact, I wasn't here a few weeks ago, because I was sitting in the entryway of our facility where our youth were hanging out together with our volunteers, because the organization that I'm on the board from, board for, has been facing a lot of threatening language and behavior. I'm the vice president of Pride Center West Texas. My youth are scared, and they are worried, and they have zero faith in this establishment right here. And for good reason. People have used them, talked about them, used their pictures in order to win political points. I've had other people come up to me with concerns, trying to figure out what is going on and what the scope is, people who work in businesses here, who take care of their aging parents and can't move away even if people want them to, who can't afford to move. And these are people who are taxpayers and citizens, just like the man who is concerned for his daughter, just like my dad is concerned for me right now as I speak to y'all. And honestly, when the people come to me and ask, it's hard to know what to tell them, especially when we double down, and this isn't just about public restrooms, it's about restrooms in any home, in any church, in any small business, will be under this ordinance, from what I understand of it. And to me, I don't see this as being preventative at all, but cruel to exactly those who are the most vulnerable among us. I completely get wanting to be secure when you go to the restroom, honestly. I've seen some threatening texts, and I wouldn't want some strange man watching a girl or any child going to the restroom. I wouldn't want any stranger watching a kid when we're going to the restroom. I'm not just concerned about the girls, but all of our children. And it would be just as weird. Do I have?
Go ahead, finish. Go ahead, go ahead and finish your thought.
Can I finish, because, can I, they gave me extra time.
No, no, ma'am, go ahead, go ahead and finish your thought.
In the restroom, though, we have stalls. If someone's peering through them, if someone causes harm, we already have laws about that. These laws don't fix anything, it causes harm, economic harm, psychological harm, obviously, as any legislative prejudice does, and physical harm, not the least of which is the people who feel like they have the right, that the law is on their side, and they can be violent towards people just because of how they think they look. And you never know. You may be able to think that you know what a trans person looks like just by looking at them, but if you see a oil field worker with a beard going into the women's restroom because he is trying to obey the law, he's going to cause concern for people that are potentially in that restroom. If you saw the woman with the long, black hair and the on-point makeup going into the men's restroom, probably, you're going to have some thoughts about her as well. This isn't about, this does not keep people safe, we already have the laws that are in place to do this.
Go ahead and finish up, ma'am.
And, yeah, thank you. If trans people need to go to the bathroom in Odessa, if this passes, they will have three choices. Either to ignore the law and hope that nobody calls them out, to follow the law and risk being attacked because of their perceived gender, or to not go, which causes issues with their health, SCI, or not SCIs, UTIs, and other dehydration rated things, which trans people suffer at, at a higher rate than other people. And all of these choices are ridiculous, especially for people who are citizens, who are taxpayers, who live here, work here, own businesses, our parents, our caregivers, take care of the people of this town, and make sure that this town is, as you said, one of the best places to be in West Texas. We are a part of your community, and what makes your community great? Please don't target our population just out of fear. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council, I'm Bradley, we met last time, hope y'all are doing okay. So I'm here again to speak on this, there's something I've actually prepared this time, and I'm feeling a little bit better, I was sick last time. I know you weren't concerned, but thanks. Anyway, again, to introduce myself, this is going on YouTube and stuff, right? I'm a local business owner, I went to Vernon Armory Tree, I went to Bonham Junior High, graduated from Permian High School, after that I joined the Navy, I went to Iraq and Afghanistan. I point that out because when I took that oath, I didn't take that oath just for pagans, I didn't take that oath just for men, I didn't take that oath just for white people. I took that oath to protect every single person that lives in this country, every single one of them. Okay? Now I'm going to read my prepared thing. To quote George Carlin, "By and large, language is a tool for concealing the truth." What's the meaning of this quote? The quote "by and large, language is a tool for concealing the truth" encapsulates a profound perspective on the nature of language and its intricate relationship with the truth. At its essence, the statement suggests that language, despite its primary function as a means of communication, has the inherent capacity to obfuscate and obscure the truth rather than reveal it. This idea challenges the conventional notion that language is a transparent conduit for conveying objective realities. Language serves as a multifaceted instrument with the power to shape perceptions, manipulate narratives, and influence perspectives. While it is ostensibly designed for clarity and understanding, the quote suggests that language can be wielded in ways that divert attention, create ambiguity, and even distort the very essence of truth. In this context, the use of qualifiers such as "by and large" acknowledges that while language can indeed convey the truth, there exists a substantial propensity for it to be employed as a veiling mechanism. I'm going to stop right there, and the soccer coach guy, I got a daughter too, all right? Look, nobody wants anything to happen to the kids, nobody, we're all, all of us are on the same team, nobody wants anything to happen to the kids. We are not trying to take laws away, you don't have to pass this ordinance, you don't have to pass it. The crime's not even been violated here, it's not even been violated. You're putting a target on the queer community's back by offering a reward and taking money out of their pockets. You're, you've put a bounty on the queer community in Odessa, Texas, you have. You voted on it, and you brought somebody who has a resentment towards his ex-wife, who married another woman, who's on a crusade, to come down here and fear monger and bash queer people for nearly an hour last time. I'm sure his friend is going to do the same thing. Thank you for the time.
Hello, I did not expect to be here today, I don't speak in public. I thought I would be at work protecting children. I'm a wife, I'm a grandmother, I'm a mother, I'm exactly who you want to protect, and I'm asking you, please don't, you're not helping. As a woman, like every single woman in this room, I've been in the men's bathroom. The first time I was in the men's bathroom, I was a graduate student, I had been studying for hours, I was tired, I was hungry, I was sleepy, I was overwhelmed, accidentally walked into the men's bathroom, terribly embarrassed, walked out, funny story, right? The most memorable time I've been in the bathroom is my husband had a major injury, he lost a finger and part, functional two other fingers, had months of physical therapy. We finally get to go to a restaurant with his friends, and this is going to be a good event. And he figures out when he gets to the bathroom that he does not know how to get his pants back up. He sends me a text, and as the woman I am, I walk into the bathroom, make sure there's no men there, I'm not going there for any other reason. I help my husband with dignity, and we walk out together. I have helped my grandfather in the bathroom, I've shooed teenage boys out of the bathroom, I have went in to get toilet paper so that the women can wipe, I have, one time pregnant, nine months, there was a school of soccer players trying to get in, and I went to the men's bathroom, totally okay, nobody cared. Maybe the problem is, is that because it's women, we service the bathrooms, that y'all don't realize that they have stalls. Now I know what you're thinking, you're thinking, I'm never going to be held accountable by this regulation. And to me, that's the sad part. That means that we just created a class of second-class human beings. My mother was raised where bathrooms were divided by class. I don't want my granddaughter to live in that time. This is not my America. I've been a business owner in West Texas for years. Please, please, please do not ask me to consider the genitals somebody was born with every time somebody walks in the bathroom. Please, I don't want to consider your genitals, please don't consider mine, I love so many of these people, and I have never considered their genitals at birth, I have just considered the human beings that they are. The world would be a lot better place if we started adopting dividing people by such a silly rule.
Three minutes are up.
We deserve real solutions, and y'all guys know this isn't. Y'all guys know that people are getting molested at backyard barbecues by people drinking and not in bathrooms. Y'all know better.
Danielle Calgano, Danielle?
Good evening, my name is Danielle Cagiano, and I'm here to speak on behalf of everybody here in the city. I'm going to try to cut it short, I'm a mother, and I've grown up here as well, as far as, you know, not moving anywhere. Bradley, thank you for your service. I do want to say that transgender people are, they can't even accept themselves, and their identity is questioned. They're either a man or a woman, and this point in day, it's like, they're transitioning, yes, but there's a risk, like, you're transitioning your body, but your mind and your mental state and your emotional state is still the same person. If we allow this to happen, we are opening a door spiritually. They're saying here that there's no facts, there's no statistics about anybody, any crimes about molestation in restrooms, all this stuff, no, there's not. But the devil does not sleep, and if you open this door spiritually, there is going to be an attack on this generation, on men, women, I don't care. We talk about kids, we talk about little girls, but little boys too, get touched. Kids get touched in playgrounds at school, during naptime, all these things, you don't think that this is going to be an opportunity for them in the restroom? I mean, come on, this is either right or wrong, and this is wrong. We know what we need to do, and we need to stand up for those who cannot speak, and those are our children, those are our teenage girls, who are worrying about their adolescent, they're transitioning to become a woman. You think a man, you think they want a man sitting there next to them while they're using the restroom and they're having to take care of themselves? My daughter doesn't even have her own dad come in the restroom, do you think we want a grown man in our restrooms seeing her? It's not right, and it's not okay. I don't, I don't care about anybody else but our children and our people in this community. If they have a sensitivity, a sensitivity of their own selves, then they need to figure themselves out, seriously, because this is not right. We want to talk about peer pressure, but yet they're coming over here and peer pressuring us in our neck, telling us that we need to do this, we need to do that, for them to accommodate them. When, why? Our children, our youth is what matters. Teachers see it all the time, people in the hospital see it all the time. Why do we have to accommodate for people who are, don't even accept themselves? This is temptation, opening up a window, opening up a door, a crack, of us allowing them to come in and do what they want. There's no crime, no, because it's not done yet, it's not said and done. If we do this, there will be things popping up. and done. If we do this, there will be things popping up. Think about the schools. Do you allow this to happen? You know how many parents are gonna be pissed when they hear that there's a grown kid or a teenage boy in a little girl's restroom? This is kids going to school wanting to learn education? No, it's about them being vulnerable in the restroom. Now they're having to worry about, oh, now I gotta go to the restroom, and there's a kid in there that's not supposed to be in there. Or you're out and having dinner with your family, and all of a sudden you see a man in your restroom, like, Mom, I can't go. I gotta go somewhere else. We know what's right, and we know what's wrong. So let's stop acting like this is okay.
Matty Grimes.
Hello. Don't know if you can hear me so well. I'm Matthew Grimes originally, and then, years later, I finally came out as myself, Anastasia Demeter. Looking at all you now, I see how you are as people. Your character has shown throughout anything else. All I ask as a transgender woman is you take your foot off of my neck. That is all.
Mary Williamson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I really hadn't intended to talk. I just signed up so that if Pauline could have my three minutes, I would give them to her. But I do wanna say one thing, and that is, we are all people. We are not some of us the portal to the devil, and some of us not. We are all people. And ever since I was a young person, which was quite a while, ever since I was a young person, the societal way of looking at gay people was that they were the bad people, that they were the predators. And I'm here to tell you, after 76 years of life, I've had gay kids in my youth group. I've raised a gay kid. I have known so many in my churches. And we are just people. We're all just people, and we deserve to be respected as such. So when, when we put all LGBT people, especially trans people, in a closet, we've seen what comes over, over the decades. And now, when they're beginning to know who they are and be able to say so, we're saying, you're not good enough. And I would like for us to stop saying, you're not good enough.
Eli Hilbert.
I signed up to give my time to Pauline.
Frida Daniels.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council. I am approving of this ordinance. Men do not belong in women's bathrooms. I hear most of the people here tonight are talking about the trans and the gays. It's not about, it's not about that. I don't even know how that couldn't even get in there. It's about women's rights. Every day, women's rights are being taken away. You see it on TV all the time. I do not want to have to use a restroom with a man, whether it be a trans, whether it be a cowboy, whether it be a roughneck. I don't want my granddaughter having to use the restroom with the same people. It is not safe. You can always have that one person with ill intent. And as they are talking about, the weaker, women are weaker than men for the most part. Children are weaker, but you can have that one man that goes into a women's bathroom, and it's not to use the bathroom, it's to take advantage of these girls. But I think that should be also, women belong in women's bathrooms. If, that's how I look at it. It's a woman's right. We need to stand up for women. As I said, too many rights are being taken away in all areas, our sports, almost every sports. So please, pass this city ordinance.
Elia Rizzo.
Okay, hello. Anastasia Rizzo. I wasn't planning on speaking, but one question, which restroom do I belong in? Going through my entire transition, do I go into the men's restroom? Do I go into the women's restroom? Do I take my daughter? As the other people here, I am a parent. I have a 13-year-old daughter. Never, ever in her life have I ever sent her in the restroom by herself, first of all. And if you're sending your child into the restroom by theirself, there's a problem as a parent. There are predators, heterosexual, homosexual, trans, in every aspect of life. Like, there's, if you're gonna be a predator, you're gonna be a predator. I went through every walk of life as not knowing, having a white mother, not knowing what trans was, telling me that, I was confused, dating my sister's friends, trying to be a gay male, and then finally going back to myself, going through my entire transition. Do I go and sit in the men's restroom with the vag, with my vaginal? Like, having different parts than a man? What makes that any difference than a woman going into a man's, or like, a man going into a woman's? Trans people. Like, I don't know what the difference is. And as, it just, it mind-boggling how people think that trans people are predators just because you feel a different way, or you're born with a body that's different than what you should be. And everybody here that believes in God, God only gives you what you can handle. And if God did not want me this way, He would not send me this way, and He would not have made it possible for man to learn how to transition me, if He did not want me this way. That's it.
Nerea Baiesa.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening.
I too, I did not plan to speak, but I cannot let this opportunity go by. I am a mother, and I am a grandmother. And I would fight tooth and nail if anyone ever tried to do anything to one of my grandchildren. And, okay, I beg to differ. God did consider, God did, He did consider the psychological differences. He created male and female. There is no record that there is anybody in there that can transition into whatever they think they might be. That is confusion. I remember my shock, going into Walmart restroom, sitting, sitting, not standing, sitting, because I'm a female, in the stall, and seeing a man's boots in the next stall. I quickly exited. I would not like my grandchildren to experience that. Okay, statistics? Yet. I applaud the city council because they are proactive. Transgenders are coming out at an alarming rate. They used to be closet people. I have a brother that's a homosexual. His partner is a drag queen. Do I love my brother? Do I love his partner? I do. That is being a true Christian. If you are a true Christian, you don't accept sin. You accept the person. And God is not a respecter of persons. He loves every single one of us here today equally, equally. But sin does exist. And this is what I'm seeing. Even my youngest little grandchildren, they have this modesty about them. They go to my restroom, and if I happen to open the door, this is what they said. I thought it was cute. Lita, I want my primacy. Can you imagine how shocking for these young children to have, to go into a restroom and when it's a person that they know is not of their sex using their restroom? Okay, I have had enough of this being complicated. It is not complicated. Is this a recent thing, that people that are transgender think they should be allowed to go in women's restrooms? I agree. Women are being trampled over. They're coming after our kids. This is one thing I will fight against. Now, I wanna know where these people went to relieve themselves before this ordinance came into being. Where? It's not difficult, especially for men. When I was a little girl, I thought, boy, it'd be so cool if I was set up like a boy. I could go to the restroom anywhere. We had an outdoor john at our farm until I was 12 years old. And guess what? I tried it. It was messy. So, I figured out, I'm a girl. All right? All right. Let's see. Like I said, I am planning to speak, but here, this victim mentality has got to stop.
Go and finish your talk.
Sir?
Go and finish your talk.
Okay. This victim mentality has got to stop. I am not judging these people, but I do not want them in my grandchildren's restroom, okay? I am here because I want to accommodate our children. I don't want them to have to go through the trauma, through the trauma to figure out why a man is in their restroom, okay? And I'm one of those that I always take them to the restroom. Even my oldest grandson, he's nine, but we're gonna have to stop that. I would take him into the women's restroom, sneak him into a stall, exit him. Yes, there are dangers. There are dangers. You know this world's gotten wacky, and we're trying to act like everything's gonna be okay. It's not. It's gonna increase. Okay? The issue's not the personal choice a person makes about his or her identity. We want to protect the identity that our precious young innocent children have today. And we don't want them to get confused because a man feels he has to walk into their restroom. Thank you.
Chris Crow.
Mayor, Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm speaking in support of the ordinance that you're looking at this evening. You know, I guess, being my age over 50, I got to thinking, am I kinda overreacting a little bit about this ordinance? And so, most of you guys know me, and you know my, I have two daughters. One's 25 and one's 21. And I even asked them, at your age, am I overreacting? I mean, is this ordinance this big of a deal? And both of my daughters kinda said the same thing. You know, even at our age, you know, I'm not so much fearful physically, you know, while there are predators out there, and as I said, you know, heterosexual or homosexual, either one, it's more of the, I don't wanna say traumatization, but the being uncomfortable to a point that it would almost be fearful, is what both of my daughters said. And as a parent, and I think most parents feel this way, we don't want our children to ever fear anything. And so, I see this ordinance not only as a protection for young girls or young boys, but in West Texas, it's a protection for me. And it's also a protection for them. In West Texas, with the attitude that, you know, roughnecks have, that rednecks have, it's one of those things that, as a, as a parent, if I see a man headed into a woman's restroom, I'll go to jail before that's gonna happen, because I don't want my daughters to be fearful in any way, form, or fashion. This ordinance protects me. On the other side, there are other dads and granddads I know in this community that, while I don't see myself as a physical person, are very physical. And therefore, if a man is gonna go into a women's restroom, they will get very physical. And I see that as creating even bigger problems, problems for Chief Burkey and his staff to have to deal with, as opposed to saying, we have a city ordinance, we have designated restrooms. In a lot of cases, we even have a restroom that boys or girls could go into. This would take care of that. So I applaud you on the ordinance. I think you're headed in the right direction. I think this is gonna promote safety across the board and prevent a lot of future problems. When you look at the demographics of our community, this is a demographic, but it's also a much smaller demographic than what, than the rest that you see. So I encourage you, please vote for this ordinance, just like you have it on the plate, and protect dads, protect grandparents, and protect kids that are gonna be just fearful. So, I think far less than the physical abuse that they would have to go through. There are predators, unfortunately, that have created some of this, but just the fear. So, thank you for your time.
Ned Lutzke.
I'm gonna make this real short. I knocked on four to 500 doors in this last election. I had a survey. Number one concern was property taxes, which shouldn't be a surprise. Number two was a kinda run-and-deal between three issues. One was public safety, one was roads and traffic, the other was family values. So, y'all do with this politically what you think is right. I favor the ordinance you're trying to pass. Thank you.
Jonathan Covey.
Mr. Mayor members, my name is Jonathan Covey. I'm the Policy Director for Texas Values. We're the largest organization in the state of Texas that focuses on the issues of faith, family, and freedom. We support the updates to Chapter 8 of the city code, as does also your, your Texas State Senator, Senator Kevin Sparks. I have a statement from his office that should be passing around to you in support of the ordinance. I won't belabor the point. This is common sense. This is constitutional in both the state and federal jurisdictions, and it is timely, as a nationwide concern exists, over protecting the privacy of women and girls. The U.S. Supreme Court, as well as federal district courts here in Texas, have been clear that sex-separated spaces, based on biology, are constitutional, and even intended in federal law. Some such cities, such as El Paso, have already taken steps to require restrooms to be what they call gender-neutral. This is actually the height of insensitivity towards women. The message is, you must accept an invasion of your privacy. And we do, we do not accept this message or this outcome. Privacy is valuable and should be protected. Thank you for passing this proposed ordinance on the first reading. I'd ask you to vote in favor of this today. And hey, it seems like a lot of community members are in favor of this as well. Thank you so much.
Carl Bodum, Beadham. My apologies.
Good evening, Odessa City Council. My name is Carl Justice Beadham. I was born and raised here in the Permian Basin and have been here since 1995. I oppose this ordinance because one thing that everybody in this room has seemed to forgotten is about intersex people. Where would intersex people have to go under this ordinance? I, I suggest that you do not pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Council, that's all the cards I had.
This letter is dated November 12, 2024. The Senate of Texas, Kevin Sparks, District 31. He says, "Dear Mayor and members of the Odessa City Council, I am writing to express my support for the proposed amendment to Section 816 of the Odessa City Code, which establishes guidelines for public restroom, locker room, and changing room use in city-owned buildings based on..." based on biological sex. This approach to maintaining privacy, security, and decency in public facilities reflects the values of our community and respects the needs of all citizens. The city council's initiative to amend Section 816 demonstrates a commitment to protecting the privacy and comfort of Odessa residents while supporting an environment of respect in public spaces. The proposed ordinance is structured to maintain essential public order and safety standards while providing reasonable exceptions for minors, law enforcement, emergency medical situations, and maintenance personnel. This balance will help ensure that our public facilities remain accessible and safe for all. I commend the mayor's and city council's responsiveness to community concerns and the effort to preserve the well-being of Odessa's residents. By advancing this ordinance, you are addressing important issues surrounding privacy and public safety in a fair, effective, and responsible manner. Please feel free to reach out if I may be of assistance as this amendment progresses. Thank you for your dedication to serving Odessa and for leading on this issue of community importance. Senator Kevin D. Sparks.
Counsel, um, I'll just open up the desk. Any discussions, any comments? All right. So, Counselor asked me one question. So, are we, we're not voting on the ordinance, we're voting on the amendment, correct?
No.
It's the whole rewritten ordinance.
Yeah, it's, as it is written right now.
That's what I, we were. We have one in place.
Well, but it's an amendment that was first approved, uh, three weeks ago. So, it is basically, this is what I was talking about before, the right of, right of private, right, private right of action. Uh, so that is what is, will be voted on tonight, when I was reading to you earlier.
Right. The amendment was in the package.
Yes.
Then the handout was.
Yes, and the handout was different, right?
We were voting to approve the amended ordinance. That was from three weeks ago.
So, that's basically, we're basically voting on the amendment. So, so, this only applies to city buildings or to all public buildings?
Well, and you may wanna get Mr. Covey to come back, but this is, this is the private right of action that is in here. And, and it is in a public or private building in the, in the city of Odessa, but as far as the city of Odessa is concerned, it is public restrooms, changing rooms, locker rooms of the city-owned buildings. But that private right of action takes it a step further.
And to explain that private right of action, and Mr. Covey can, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, think back, uh, to basically the heartbeat bill. As a private citizen here, if I'm following Dan down the hall, and Dan goes into the women's restroom, uh, now you stand because we're in good, I don't point at anybody else that way. I can follow civil, civilly on that.
You can.
That's it.
But, but as it stands now, and that's what we want to be clear about, that what was a, what we had three weeks ago is as it is right now in the, in the, in the packet that you have before you today.
And to clarify that point just a little bit more, that's not just in city. That's in any restroom that is designated for a specific gender.
So, I guess that's, Counselor, that's where I'm having my problem with, with all of this, is what, under what authority does this city council have to tell school districts, colleges, UTPB, how their restrooms and so forth?
In my opinion, we, we don't have the authority to tell ECSD or anything. It's just, it's just gonna be within the city of Odessa, on, in our public buildings. And of course, it makes a private right of action if you see somebody else going in. Let's say like, John follows, sees me go into a, a women's restroom over at Cheddar's, and then he, then he could have a private right of action to sue me.
Within, within the city of Odessa, that's not the cities. That's not the cities specifying anything on a private.
It's, it's, it's putting the rights in, into the community.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, yeah.
There's a big difference, where people are confusing criminal and civil.
Yeah, but it's a civil matter.
It's a civil matter between two parties.
Between us. Yeah. And the city's not involved with that part.
No, the city's not involved. It's two parties. It's putting the right within two parties in a civil matter. So.
And the civil, civil right of action is held up in court, all the way to the Supreme Court.
I'm not gonna recognize it.
No, no, you, you don't need to do that. You, you don't need to do that. But, but basically, that's what this private right of action does. And so, that's what you have before you, so that's what you vote up or down, to approve it or disapprove it. It's balls in y'all's court.
And you need a motion in a second.
Yeah, yeah, as such.
I bring motion up, that passes this, this ordinance the way it is reading, written tonight?
I have a motion by Councilmember Haney. This is a discuss and consider amendment in Section 8-1-6 entering restroom of the opposite sex, City Code of Ordinances. This is the second and final reading. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by motion of aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion passes. Five to one. We're gonna move on to miscellaneous. Item 17, discuss and consider voucher program for spray and neutering of animals at Fitz, Fix West Texas. Councilmember Mata?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to, um, move to, um, postpone item 17 indefinitely.
Okay. We have item 17 postponed. Item 17 as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to postpone item 17 indefinitely. All those in favor indicate by motion of aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passing then. We're gonna move on to appointments and boards. City Secretary?
Uh, no, no appointments.
None?
No.
We're gonna move on to item 19. Executive session is authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.0712. Consultation with Attorney. The city council made adjournment to executive session to discuss a matter in which the duty of the attorney as governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state by Texas clearly conflicts with the chapter and city attorney to discuss construction of the water treatment plant.
And then, Mayor, you wanna go and do this?
Item B, executive session is authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.0712. Consultation with Attorney. City Council made adjournment to executive session to discuss a matter in which the duty of attorney as governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state by Texas clearly conflicts with the chapter and the city attorney to discuss construction of the fueling stations. Item C, once again, executive session. Can we just say ditto? As authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.074. Personnel matters. City Council made adjournment to the employment evaluations, duties, discipline, complaint and dismissal of public officer employee. Texas Government Code 551.074. A Municipal Court Judge, Robert Martin. B, City Secretary, Norma Aguilar. C, City Attorney, Dan Jones. D, City Manager, John Bigman. Annual evaluation of council appointees. I have a motion and a second.
So, move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mata, uh, second. Second by Councilmember Cornell. All those in favor indicate by motion of aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion is passing then. We are in executive session.
We ready? Seeing there goes no action taken in executive session, I need a motion and a second to reconvene in an open session.
So move.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second by Councilmember McConnell, all those in favor indicate by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passing unanimously. I'm gonna enter a letter. I'm gonna enter, enter a letter into the record. This is addressed to Mayor Hoven, City, City Council. Eer Mayor and City Council, in accordance with section 5.2 of the employment agreement dated April 9, 2024, by and between the City of Odessa and City Manager John Beckmeyer, this letter will serve as a thirty, thirty day notice to terminate this agreement and my employment with the City of Odessa. I will continue to serve the city as the City Manager of the City of Odessa throughout the thirty day period at the pleasure of the City Council. In accordance with section 5.3 of the above referenced employment agreement, the following demands are made. Item one, payment of the remaining salary which I would have earned during the term referenced in section one of the employment agreement. Two, payment of the remaining vehicle allowance which I would have earned during the term referenced in section one of the employment agreement. Thank you, John Beckmeyer. Council?
I'll make a move, a motion. I'll move to accept the resignation of the City Manager John Beckmeyer according to his letter to the council. However, I would like to reject the thirty day notice and have the termination immediately.
Is that all your motion?
I, uh, I second it.
So I have a motion and a second to make the termination immediately. All those in favor indicate by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? There's gotta be a motion passing unanimously.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for interim City Manager if we're gonna need one.
Okay, discussion? Any discussion? What is your, what is your motion?
I move to appoint Agapito Bernal as interim City Manager effective immediately and to serve at the pleasure of the council and incoming council and that he shall receive compensation commensurate with the additional duties that he will be retaining. and that he shall receive compensation commensurate with the additional duties that he will be retaining.
Council, discussion?
I don't think it's appropriate for this council to make that move. I think it should be done in the first session for the new council. That ought to be their decision, not ours. It'll be a totally new council, and they may see it differently.
I make, I second Councilman Mata's motion to move forward with Agapito Bernal. And I would like to add to that motion to instruct the interim City Manager, if we vote on Agapi, to pay Mr. Beckmeyer with his contract by 9 o'clock a.m. in the morning, either by direct check or by direct deposit.
And for me, we need an interim to run this until the new council takes effect. So yes, I'm all for this.
We have a motion and a second. You have that for the record, City Secretary?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor indicate by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five to one. Seeing that there's no more city business before this council, item 21, make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilmember Connell. All those in favor indicate by a motion of aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.